Going to share some preliminary information about the budget forecast as we look forward to building eighteen, nineteen school budget.
I can do it. As long as you're gonna make me stand, I can change my slide.
Yeah, good.
Thank you. Well, this will be relatively short and probably the shortest presentation of the entire budget season, so enjoy it. It's very early in the budget season and one thing, because it's so early, a lot of the pieces aren't in yet. You know, we're still waiting for the federal government to come through with the budget and the state government to come through with an initial forecast. So, a lot of the numbers that we need to finalize or come forward with a draft in the next couple of months aren't available quite yet. So, some of these are, you know, where we think we're gonna be. And a lot of them are just on hold until we get better information. But just to get you apprised as to where we are on some of the pieces, we're bringing forth a couple of the major pieces that are gonna come into play as we move forward. As you know, we settled a couple of contracts. We do have salary increases in for both the staff and the teachers. And we did pay retro pay this year, so we have somewhat of a give on the budget side because we don't have the burden of paying the retro. But we will, of course, have to pay the increases in salaries. So, there'll be a little bit of a bump up in salaries and wage line. Health insurance is a high estimate right now. We're hoping it comes in. I know, that's what I said to the whole group. The whole group said, "What?" Well, we're hoping that it lands somewhere around the six, seven percent range, but the consensus of the group was to move. We always try and be the most conservative out of the gate. So, it's the best case, worst-case scenario, working backwards. So, every time we meet, hopefully, we can make you feel a little bit better. Not worse, okay? So, it's potential, but likely that it's going to be less. In which case, we have almost a three-point-one-million-dollar health insurance bill right now. So, ten percent on that would be three-hundred-and-ten-thousand. Teachers' retirement rates are going up again. Oh, there's a typo in there, and I apologize. It's supposed to be nine-point-eight, not nine-seven-eight. There shouldn't be a... But, yeah, they are going back up, so we saw somewhat of a downturn.
Do you know what the rationale for that is? I was reading that they were touting that the TRS is the healthiest retirement system in the nation and that the, because of the stock market increases, that they've earned more money by...
But there's a lag. Because there's always that lag where they're gonna do, the stock market increases translating to bonuses, translating to taxes, which come into the state budgets, but then that state budget won't be taking effect, or those taxes won't be coming in or finalized until this year. It'll be finalized into a state budget and then the calculations and the actuaries. Plus, it's over a period of time, the number of people in the plan. I don't know how, it was actually supposed to be nine-point-eight percent. It's all actuaries, so as things go up and go down. Yeah, you see the increases in the stock market and the wages, not necessarily translating into this for, you don't know. And if something happens to offset that with other, because, you know, now we're looking at foreign markets that are doing great and others that aren't doing so great, but most of the state retirements based on their tune on their money.
Right.
So, yeah, the stock market's doing well, so hopefully that'll translate into better rates down the road. They may have just let it slip a little too low, but then you, I don't know if you can say they let it, because it's all actuarial-based. So, that wouldn't be a fair statement either. We don't like the swings, you know, highs and lows, but it's part of what we have to live with. The ERS rates are looking fairly flat. It's an average rate I put in there. If you, we took the average contributions over the total payroll. There's so many different levels in ERS, different levels or taxes are assessed at different rates. So, they range from eight percent to almost twenty percent. So, in there, you know, the bulk of it is really what we use for forecasting. And we won't know exactly what those numbers are until we get the final bills, obviously, at the end of the year. BOSI's tuition expenses. We've had a tough, tough year with some of the increases in tuition costs and BOSI's costs relative to student body. Certainly a plan for some of that increase. Out of almost five-hundred thousand, four-fifty to five-hundred thousand dollars in increased expenses, we had a margin, about two-hundred thousand built in. So, we're over-budget on a couple of those lines, which planned for, we tried to plan for that. And it becomes very difficult to know what's gonna happen the next year, as you know, which is why you have those margins. How much of a margin to build in? You know, you don't wanna rob the wrong pieces of the puzzle to fill in in those lines, and yet you wanna be conservative enough so you're not cut short. So, trying to find that balance and then getting, you know, things happen during the year. We can't control. So, looking to next year, that number may increase, depending on what our forecasts are, may decrease if we feel that, you know, we can manage. But I don't think it's gonna go down.
May I ask you, is, do you know what programs that is? Or is that special education program? Or is that CTE?
Mostly special education. And some technology is in there, too. We did spend a little bit more this year as well. And as Mike knows, we're putting in access points and trying to get things settled in the building. Some of the, some of the projects, we can knock off now instead of waiting for the capital project to go through, for example. So, instead of burdening the project or wait, the students having to wait to have things done, we tried moving up some of those technology expenses and pay for those that occurred. And we did have enough money in the technology budget. There was available funds there. There are available funds there. But as we look forward, we're looking at maybe spending a little bit more next year to make sure some of the pieces are together. So, we don't have programs that... You look like a puzzle.
Well, I'm just thinking of the things we really have in control, which moves into the district.
That's right. So, I think you did a good job in terms of planning for the increases this year. And we're using those, mark those, you know, fund balances that were built in, so to speak. But it's gonna be, it's gonna be a little, little tight going into the second half of the year. Just trying to make sure that we keep everything in line and not have to overspend. From the revenue side, this is where most of our questions are at this point in time because we don't have a state budget out yet. The tax levy increase, I kinda jumped ahead. Tax levy increase, right now, I used a preliminary CPI factor of two percent. The last couple of quarters have been a little slightly higher than two percent. But to be safe, I left it at the two. So, hopefully, the year and quarter will bring us a little bit higher. But with a two-percent CPI growth and a point-seven-eight percent, I gotta make sure I say that right, growth in the assessments, in relative factors, gives us, right now, a tax cap of about two-point-seven-eight. And that may change a little bit. That translates into a little over three-hundred thousand dollars in tax levy, if we stay on the cap, with this calculation right now. State aid, we should know another week or two where the preliminary numbers are gonna come out for the state. And of course, it's another negotiation for the next couple of months till the final numbers come in. But any big, I haven't heard of any large adjustments this year coming through the state legislature because they took care of what they considered the biggest issues in terms of state funding and education. So, we're not gonna see probably huge increases there. Again, with the increase in BOSI services, we may see a bump in the BOSI's aid, those kinds of things. But as far as the foundation aid, I'd hate to set a projection, but I wouldn't plan for more than a percentage point or two right now, unless things look a lot better going down the road. Fund balance, how much we apply, again, that's part of the discussion. Once we start getting more of the pieces together, know where this year's falls, and we're able to know how much we need, how much we can afford to give up to keep the programs in place, that's to be discussed. And how much we can use out of reserves. You know, we can use some reserves because we do have retirement reserves set aside. And we can pull some of that to perhaps smooth over the increase in the TRS, or TRS contributions and the ERS contributions.
Just ERS.
Or just ERS. I'm sorry, great. TRS is not allowable. Okay. So, that's a little bit. Nope. Very great. And we'll let you know as we hear more.
Can you just refresh our memory as the next presentation is, I presume, the next board meeting?
Uh, there...
Or not, or the second?
We, I have to go back to the draft calendar.
I think we did draft a presentation for the next board meetings. Hopefully, by then, we'll hear more about state aid. We'll have some finer numbers on the fund balance and reserves. It'll give me a little more time to scrub, give us time to get our undraft around how much more revenue we can. Because what I failed to say, and I should make mention of, is the fact that even though we have the higher costs in the special education area for tuition, some of those costs will be recouped via BOSI's aid the following year, not this year. But we also have some higher tuition costs for outside district students or non-resident students that we may be able to recover from other, other districts in the area. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Correspondence. The board did receive a letter from Maureen Chalmers, as you all know, inquiring about two main topics. One was the use or lack of the use of interim superintendent with Kimberly, and then a question about the search timeline for a new superintendent. So, the search timeline, we can chat about a little later in the agenda. The inquiry, all of you know this in terms of the use of interim or not, was really prompted at the suggestion of Mr. McGuire. And his thought and came to be consensus among the board at that time was that we were, unlike most interim superintendents, where there was no intention of that person being a candidate or the future superintendent, the, I think, expectations of what that interim superintendent would be doing are different than the expectations that we as a board have had of Kimberly. And so, since we felt the work that she was charged to do was that of a full-fledged superintendent, that we felt that maybe using the term interim repeatedly in every piece of correspondence and every reference to her would undermine that, that thrust forward in terms of continuing to move the district forward as opposed to being just a sort of a placeholding superintendent. So, after discussion with Mr. McGuire and the consensus of the board, we asked her, or directed her not to use that title, to just sign her name in that as superintendent of schools. So, Maureen had a question, not so much from, I think, her personal perspective, but just for the public's knowledge. And I don't think that we had discussed that previously in terms of our thinking. So, my, one of the perspectives that you could look at it is, when we hire a permit, quote, permanent superintendent and extend a contract to that person, we don't make that person sign superintendent from two thousand twelve to two thousand fifteen as the length of their contract. And so, we felt the use of the term interim was just talking about a time period and therefore, and not the description of the work to be done. So...
Don't say superintendent, comma, permanent.
Right, exactly. So, that's the rationale and thought process behind requesting Kimberly not to use interim in her title as, in terms of correspondence or reference to her. So... And as I said, the other part of Maureen's inquiry was about the search process and timeline. We'll chat about that under new business. Okay. Committee reports. Douglas, I think you're the only one. BOSI's and anything from Central New York School Board Association?
Well, the only thing from the New York school, I'm sorry, my computer is currently in sickbay, so I don't have the calendar. But the, our meeting with the legislature, legislators will be up at Southern Cuyahoga this time, rather than at our BOSI's. And I believe it's like around the twenty-first to twenty-second, but as I said, I don't have that with me, and I apologize. You should all have received in your emails somewhere along the line, a couple of reminders from...
I think those emails are some of the board's.
You've got them. Excuse me. I didn't realize that. All right. Well, I'll just...
Our server rejects them, the spam to my email.
Oh, I see. So, do you want me to just email you mine and...
Yes.
Yes, okay. I'm sorry, Kimberly, I mean, Tina, I didn't realize that. Oh, yeah. Well, as soon as your dad gets it back to me, that will be the first thing I do.
And any updates from BOSI's?
Uh, no. No, we were canceled.
Okay. Administrators' report?
We do not have one scheduled for this evening, other than Lauren's presentation. But I just wanna go back to, you had asked about the presentation on January twenty-second, and Tina was so kind to find that for me. So, the preliminary administrative budget will be presented that evening. Our revenue projections, debt service, and employee benefits will be covered at the next board meeting.
Great. Grace, student report?
Um, yeah. So, our winter sports have been, they've started, they started, I think, early December, mid-November. And one of the big things in indoor track this year is Mr. Dureche finally got approval to have a bus bring T-Bird students over to Watkins to have a swim workout on Wednesdays, which is optional.
Oh, wow.
And I have gone on it multiple times, and it is, it is, it's fantastic. We've gotten rave reviews from, like, Watkins likes having us there, 'cause Truanceburg is very polite. And all of the track athletes have absolutely loved it, and we're trying to get more and more to go, especially since with Mr. Dureche being out. We're trying to, like, really just keep it going because he was the heart of it. So, on this Friday, there is, NHS is hosting another blood drive, so please come and donate.
Here in the high school? Here in the high school?
Mm-hmm. It should be in the auditorium again. The musical rehearsals should start next week. They are, the musical is St. Patrick's Day weekend in March. And the, we're doing Shrek.
Wow.
It's gonna be fun. I'm pretty excited for it. And we have recently learned that we're taking a trip with the music department, the music boosters trip. We're going to Boston. And this is the first time that, like, anyone in, yeah, anyone in the high school for chorus this year has been able to go on a trip like this. So, I think everyone is really, really excited for it. I know I am.
But I believe it's an agenda item later, so we'll make sure we approve it.
What are the hours for the blood drive on Friday?
Uh, they are usually nine to one, I think, or two. I think it's nine to two. So...
Any feeling on your part of translating all that energy for the swimming pool in Watkins, for a swimming pool here in Truanceburg?
We need one. If we get, if we get one, I won't be able to use it as much, but I want it for the underclassmen.
So, interestingly, you raised that point. We just had a request from the Truanceburg Community Recreation Department to meet with this Board of Education. And also, they reached out to the mayor to reach that board as well, for all the minds to come together to talk about the rec facilities that they would like to push forward and what our ideas are. So, you'll be receiving a doodle invite from Tina to establish a date for all of us to come together and brainstorm.
We did receive it.
Yep.
Yes, yep.
So, if you didn't, ask Tina.
Yeah. Should be late this afternoon, I think, or sometime today.
Yeah, it was this afternoon, twelve-twenty-seven.
Twelve-twenty-seven, there, yeah.
But with the forward, sometimes it goes to spam, stuff like that.
Really?
Yeah, in the subject line, for me, anyway, Gmail.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much, Grace. Consent agenda. Are there any items that members would like pulled for further discussion?
I had a question.
You wanna hold one up?
Can we pull G out for the standard question about stuff like this?
Yeah, okay.
Yes. And F, I have a question.
Okay. We have a motion of acceptance for the consent agenda, A through E and H.
Motion.
Those in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay. Now, we have a motion for the approval of F, item F, approval of the two thousand eighteen, nineteen TST BOSI's Program Services Cost Allocation Methodology for Shared Service Unit Cost Determination.
I'll move it. I'll second.
Second. Discussion. Questions?
I had a question on, like, the acronyms that are being used for the cost basis. Am I asking you right back? For the RWAB, I don't really know what that is.
What is it?
RWA.
Oh, RWAB? That's the Resident Weighted Average Daily Attendance?
Yeah.
So, they're...
Well, that is a heavy, huh?
Well, actually, there's so many, there are a lot of acronyms in state education, obviously, and we get overwhelmed with them some days. They just, there are, there's resident enrollment, and then there's resident attendance. So, how many students are enrolled here versus how many attend? There's a difference because the attendance isn't a hundred percent every day, so our attendance rate is lower, or number, I pull up to E. But there's another acronym, FTE, right? I know, we just keep throwing them out. You know what the FTEs are.
Right.
Full-time equivalents. I'm not sure if the public knows, but... So, when you get into the weighted students, they weigh students differently based on categories. So, special education students and high school students are rated differently from elementary students. So, they take your enrollment and attend, they take your attendance, and they look at the weight of those attendance. It's a big factor in determining state aid in BOSI, in the way that BOSI's aids, as well as what they use here for allocating expenses across districts. Some expenses, not every one, obviously, but some of our BOSI's services use RWA.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, then be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education for Truanceburg Central School District hereby approves the two thousand seventeen, the eighteen, nineteen TST BOSI's Program Services Cost Allocation Methodology for Shared Service Unit Cost Determination. Those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. G, questions on motion to, for the disposal of surplus property? Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education for the Truanceburg Central School District hereby declares the attached list of books as property to be disposed of accordingly. May I have a motion?
Show me.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion and questions?
Just the standard question, when we see disposed of accordingly, where it goes.
Well, if there's, regardless of whether it's books or property, if there's value, we're required to see, to maximize whatever value we can, yeah, from any property that has a salvage value. So, if they're gonna sell second-hand equipment, which you've seen in the past, we're gonna get rid of any access. We're required to get the highest possible dollar back to the taxpayers. So, we go to bids, and can use auction houses. So, we're gonna use auction houses for the excess buses and vehicles we did recently. With the textbooks, if there's no value to it, it could be a lot of time and effort spent getting, like, nothing because, well, there's no value to them. People don't wanna buy books so much. So, we can try and salvage them if there were a value to them. And if there's not, then we try and find other uses for them, or try and recycle them and go through one of the other companies that could take them. Textbooks more, so then, then these types of books to recycle for other uses. But it just gives us the ability to turn around and see who else might be able to make use of them instead of throwing them trash.
So, I can speak to the titles here. These were old class set books, the old London Library books. These are all copies of the books that have been very well-loved over the years, and they are falling apart. They have been just loved to no end. Moody Life for disposal before recycling anything is to offer them to the students first and see which titles they'd like to get their hands on. I know with the wrinkle and tie coming out, that maybe students are interested in that. But these are books that have just been around in middle school for a great number of years and really need to get someplace other than a shelf so that they can be further enjoyed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Right.
Nine opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Which brings us to new business. We have a motion for the acceptance of a donation. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education for the Truanceburg Central School District hereby accepts the donation of two-hundred dollars from an anonymous donor to pay for student lunch accounts in the elementary school as presented.
So, no, really? Nice. That's cool.
Second. I'll second. Questions, discussions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eight.
I did wanna know how, how the two-hundred is going to be divvied up. Like, how do you know what accounts are negative?
So, we can reach back out to the school lunch department program and see the negative balance on the accounts which this donor did and wanted to have a total. And so, that total actually takes care of all negative balances to this point.
Oh, that's really nice.
Great reflection on our community.
So, at the end of the year, when there's a negative balance and there's not a donation, what happens to those kids?
The general fund pays for it.
Oh, okay.
We collect as much as we can.
I'm just thinking, I was wondering if maybe that might be something we, at some point in time, might want to set up, some sort of a regular donation place for aiding and supporting the school lunch. Because regardless of what we do, we always come in quite a bit over budget, as is the way of the school and the nation, as far as I know.
Well, not everybody, but most of the...
Yeah.
There are, there are some, but... There are, there are some, but it's very difficult to make, to even break even with the new regulations, it's incredibly difficult and very challenging.
Maybe I'll look into it.
All right. Sounds like a good task, Douglas, thank you. Hearing no other questions or comments, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We have a motion, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Truanceburg Board of Education hereby accepts a donation of $300, six $50 gift certificates from John White to the elementary school nurse's office to give to families in need as presented.
So moved.
Second, questions or discussion?
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John, this is something I know that he has done both publicly and anonymously for many years, so we thank him for his continued contribution. Hearing no other questions or comments, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Ah, the field trip request, there we go. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education for the Truanceburg Central School District hereby approves a field trip request for the music boosters trip to Boston, Massachusetts, from April 20th to 22nd, 2018.
So moved. Second.
Okay, questions or discussions?
Yay.
Yay, okay, Grace says yay, that, it should not influence your vote too much, but any other questions or comments? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Second field trip, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education for the Truanceburg Central School District hereby approves a field trip request for the Global Humanism Class Trip to New York City from February 15th to 19th, 2018, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Comments?
What class is that, that, is that the name of the class?
Global.
Is that the lecture?
It is. Okay.
It's a program that was started last year as an independent study with a smaller group of students, you heard about, we had a number of kids that went to the UN last year that were a part of Jane's ninth grade English students, and a few kids that were part of the Fantastic Club, and they went and presented the global human rights issues last year at the UN, and it was an amazing experience, so we decided to create an elective course to create more opportunities for kids to get involved with that process, and Jane has done some amazing work, and we have a group of students that is looking to go to the UN again and present, this year's theme that they were focusing on is climate change.
Wonderful.
They're also going to be presenting in some local school districts, we're working with, Dryden and Lansing have both agreed to host some of our students that are going over to present their research.
How many students are involved in the class?
There's 12 students in the class this year, plus a few, there's 12 kids in the class, and I think a few more that are working on independent studies, so.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item E, approval of curriculum projects, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education for the Truanceburg Central School District hereby approves the following curriculum projects for the 2017-18 school year.
So moved. Second.
Okay, questions or discussions? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. So, the last item is superintendent search timeline, which the board has talked about, but I'm not sure that we've discussed publicly to any great extent, certainly not recently, but the board's intention from the appointment of Kimberly as an interim beginning July 1st was to make a decision how we were going to proceed by the end of January 2018, so the end of this month, feeling that if, for whatever reason, either on the board's behalf or Kimberly's behalf, that this was not working out or not a chosen career path, that, or we just wanted to go out for a general search, including internal candidates, that we wanted to start that process early enough in the school year so that we could have a permanent superintendent onboard by July 1st. We certainly heard the teachers loud and clear from last year that there was not enough time given to them in terms of organizing their questions and representatives to do that in a thoughtful, I think, impactful manner. So, we wanted to make sure that whatever decision we made in terms of proceeding, that we allowed ourselves enough time to have that input if that was necessary. So, we're looking to make that decision, or certainly have a public discussion of that decision at our January 22nd board meeting, and if it carries over to the following February meeting, then we'll make a final decision no later than that. So, I certainly would welcome the public to provide us input on their perception, hopefully fact-based, of Kimberly's performance to date. The board has done an internal evaluation, and in that process has also included input from the entire administrative team, so, well, that's the plan at this point, we're confident that we'll be able to stick to that timeline. And that brings us back to open forum, so one last chance. At this point, we, at the time, we'd like to give district residents an opportunity to ask any questions about this agenda or about operations within the school district, personnel items will not be addressed in public session, comments may be recorded and responded to by the Board of Education or the superintendent of schools within 24 to 48 hours. We ask that if you choose to speak, you introduce yourself to the board, and then you keep your comments to five minutes or less. Hearing none, moving on to board forum. For the good of the order, let's, Sarah, Michelle, we'll go right down, anything.
I'm all set. I'm set.
Okay, Sarah?
I'm, I'm set.
You're set.
I'll, once I get my computer back, make a list of what went on at the, and also an update on what's going to happen with the forum for South Seneca, actually, South Seneca, yeah, Seneca.
Okay, great. Diana?
I'm good.
Okay, great.
I had everything I wanted for.
Okay, just a reminder to the board that I believe at our next meeting, we will also have to be deciding on a building, capital project direction?
That is correct, the materials are on the website, if anyone wants to go back, and on the 22nd would be a great time to ask questions.
And we need a decision that night?
That's correct.
Okay, so, just to update you on that.
This is the decision that will go for a vote.
Yes, yes, it is. Good question, thank you, yes, for clarifying, it is. Then may I have a motion for, to adjournment to executive session for matters pertaining to the dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We're adjourned, and we do not...